Recording in progress.
You all set? The Newton zoning board of adjustments public meeting called to order at 7:01 PM. Jim, you want to do a roll call for attendance?
Mr. Kozak.
Here.
Mr. Hamel.
Yep.
Mr. Gibbs.
Yeah.
Ms. Reardon.
Here.
Mr. Russell.
Here.
Ms. White.
Here.
Mr. Silver has already let me know that he would be late.
Okay.
And Ms. McCarthy is excused.
Please stand for pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in his evil, liberty, and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is election of offices.
Take a motion to elect Jack Kozak as chair and John Silver as vice chair.
Second.
Take a poll, Jim.
Mr. Gibbs.
Aye.
Mr. Hamel.
Aye.
And Mr. Kozak.
Aye. Okay. Ms. Reardon will be in for Ms. McCarthy. And Rick will be in for a while for John Silver. Okay. We'll stop the public hearing. Jim, could you read the request by Mr. Showell?
Matthew Showell of 10 Gould Hill Road, Newton, New Hampshire requests a public hearing for relief from section 14 comma A, sorry, 14 comma 3 comma A of zoning specifically to be allowed to house more than four cars in a garage. The property is referenced as tax map 10, block 4, lot 1 dash 2.
Would you like to stand up to the podium?
Good evening, Mr. Chair. My name is Matthew Showell. I live at 10 Gould Hill Road in Newton, New Hampshire, and I'm here seeking relief for the bylaw that requires no less or no more than four vehicles in a residential zone in a garage. And that's what I'm seeking relief for. I'm building a, I actually grew up here in Newton. I moved out in 1984 after college, and I've been living in Amesbury for 40 years and gonna retire this year, hopefully. And my hobby is antique vehicles, and I have a collection of them. And it's been my dream to always have a garage big enough to be able to store and work on my vehicles. So this property came available here in Newton, and I fell in love with it. And now I'm, you know, fortunately have enough property on to be able to build a garage anyway. But I'm here seeking relief to be able to hold more than four vehicles in that garage.
Do we have all the paperwork, Jim? It was requested.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions from the board?
When you go through the criteria, what makes your property, what is the special condition of your property that makes it different from everybody else?
There is none. You know, basically, what I'm doing again is just seeking relief to have four vehicles in a garage. So I don't, you know, there's really no special conditions that would allow someone to have more than four vehicles in a garage. It's just that my property allows me to put up a building by right, big enough to hold more than four cars in the garage. So rather than come into town and just by right put up the building and ignore that bylaw, I thought it was wrong. So I'm here to do what's right and seek relief. So I'm not breaking any rules or laws.
Yes, Roger?
Yeah. I have a question for you. When you applied for this permit, did you submit a set of plans for this building?
No, actually, I didn't have to because I'm not seeking any dimensional relief. So the only thing that the building inspector was looking for, he said, "Well, just draw up on a piece of paper where you're gonna put the, where you're gonna put the building, just so I know that it's not in any setbacks." So, you know, as a result of coming here and talking to you people a month ago, I had a friend of mine come by and he did, he surveyed the whole property for me, measured everything out, and I presented that to the building inspector last week or the week before. I dropped everything off to his office, and he said, "Okay, well, then I'll see you after the hearing."
Okay, so if you're looking for relief on this, do you think it would be reasonable for the members of this board to be able to see a set of plans that show where the building is?
Where it is.
No. What it is.
Sure. And I asked Mr. Doggett if he wanted that to be part of the material that I gave to you, and he said, "No," he didn't think that was necessary. I brought it last time I was here, and no one asked for it.
Okay, so I was at that meeting. A week after that meeting, I decided I wanted to go down to the building department and see the plans.
Yep.
Because 99% of the times, you have to submit a set of plans in order to get a permit.
I did. I dropped it off.
You dropped it off at the building department?
Yes.
When?
Probably maybe a week at the latest after I had my hearing last March with you guys. Yeah.
Okay, so that was at the building department?
Yes, Sam. I dropped it off.
So the reason why I'm so frustrated is because I went down to look for those plans. They weren't there.
I don't have any control over that.
Correct. So then they decided to contact you. You ignored several of their contacts. This is according to them now, not, I'm not saying this is what happened. But they said they tried contacting you several times, you did not respond. After about a week, you finally responded, and you agreed to bring a set of plans into the building department. I've been waiting three weeks to see those plans, and I have yet to see them.
Okay. I don't know what you're talking about.
Okay.
100% false. This has been a dream of mine since I was 25 years old. I'm finally old enough to be able to afford a building like this.
Okay.
I dropped those plans off the day I received an email from the building department requesting those plans. I dropped them off Thursday night. I got that email maybe Tuesday, I think it was Wednesday, dropped them off Thursday night. I work full-time. The only time I can get here is on Thursday night when they're open later. So that's when I dropped everything off. I've had those plans for seven or eight months, sitting in my house. Nobody has asked for those plans. I would have given them up seven months ago. It wasn't until the other two weeks ago, or whatever it was, when he said, "Hey, can you drop off a set of those plans?" So I did.
That's when he dropped them off?
Yep, absolutely. And I dropped off my foundation plan that I paid $4,500 for, the building plan, and that site map that I, that's in front of you people. I dropped all three of those off at the building department, had a conversation with Sam, told him what was going on. He said, "Okay, great. I'll see you when, I'll see you next, or the first week of April. I'll see you then."
Okay. So I'm gonna have to check with the building department and see what the hang took place there, because that's just not acceptable, right?
Yeah. I don't know what to tell you.
So let me ask you a couple of questions, because there's a couple of things that I'm concerned with, is basically the height of the building. The height of the side walls. How many doors you have.
Yep.
And what type of foundation you're putting in. Is it gonna be a cap foundation, or are you gonna have storage underneath the foundation also, inside the foundation?
It's cap foundation.
It's a cap foundation, okay?
It's four-foot glass walls, cap foundation.
Yep.
It's a steel building. I have two doors. They're 16 by 10. I have eight windows. I have one entry door, one man door, they call it. And that's it. It's a steel building. It's gonna be white like my house with a gray roof.
I remember that.
I've got the, all the stone, the faux stone that you put around the edges just to dress it up some. Working with Peter Nicole is my site guy. I've got Joe Wilson as my concrete guy. I've, you know, there's, I don't know what to tell you, other than I've had conversations with the building inspector for at least probably four months. I've been in and out of his office. Telling him exactly what I'm doing. And there has never been one iota of a question. The walls are 14 feet. It's a four-to-one pitch on the roof.
So how high is the peak?
I think it's 22 feet, maybe, something like that.
Okay. And your doors are on the gable end, I'm gathering?
Doors are on the...
On the front?
On the front.
On the long side?
One on each side.
Okay.
One on each end.
Okay.
Yep.
Fair enough.
Yep.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep, absolutely.
Are there any other questions for the members before I turn it over and ask the public if they have some comments? Anybody from the public would like to make any comments or have any questions for the... Yes, ma'am. Ma'am, could you give us your name and address, please?
Christie Scafidi and 12 Gould Hill Road.
Okay.
So when this was first brought to our attention, we were told it was gonna be a garage in the front of the house, so nothing in the back of the house. So this is news to us. I guess our concern is, looking at the plan, the 25-foot setback, that driveway goes over that 25-foot setback, and there's also a drainage pipe that is leading into our yard. So that's our concern. And the other concern is, is I guess the building in itself. It's a commercial building. I, it's a residential area. I mean, if I wanted to live next to a commercial building, I would have bought a house next to it. I just think that's the only concern, especially if you're gonna have cars stacked. It sounds like a lot of work is gonna be done in them. How loud are you gonna be at night? I do have kids. We're just concerned with the whole, the whole thing in general. When the doors were mentioned, is it front and to the back to 108, or is it on the sides?
It's towards the house.
So...
It's on the front of the building, the two to my house.
Okay. The doors?
Yep.
I'm sorry. So, oh, so two, oh, so...
On the end, not on the 108 side.
Just two?
On the outside, two doors, one on this end, one on that.
Okay. So our main concern is the driveway and the drainage pipe. And I guess the whole thing, because we weren't expecting this. So when my husband told him, "It's your property, you can do whatever you want," you know, we weren't told that it was gonna be now a 40 by 60 steel building in the backyard, right up against our property line, when you have a hole, you have woods on the other side of your property line, but it has to be right up against ours. So...
Would you like to make some comments?
Sure, absolutely. So, again, the, I'm following all of the building rules and regulations. There's a 25-foot setback. I'm 30 feet into my property, so I didn't want to be near the setback. I wanted to be at least five feet in past the setback. So, you know, again, I'm, I'm sorry if you don't feel that's fair, but I am trying to even be further on my property than I absolutely have to be. That, that pipe that you see, the person who put the road in, when he was cutting in the road, that is a drainage pipe for all of the drains that go around my house. And when he was cutting in the road, he dug up the pipe. He didn't know it was there. So he replaced the pipe because it got crushed. I, again, don't know what to tell you, other than that pipe was there when I bought the house, and it just... I can, well, I think he left it that, and I don't know this. I'm assuming he left it that way because it's a drainage pipe, and if you bury it in the ground, it's gonna back up the water. It's gotta, the water has to leave the pipe somehow. I can talk to him and see what we can do about not making the pipe visible, if that makes it better for you. I'll be happy to do that. I have no problem. Yeah, yeah. Yes, agreed. And, and I did, I did briefly talk with your husband and told him what I was doing. And to be quite honest with you, what I wanted to put and where I wanted to put it would have looked absolutely horrendous. It would have been such a bad decision on my part. That's why it's way down in the backyard now. Where I was gonna put it in between my property and your property in the front yard would have looked absolutely horrible. And I decided that I would have to spend the extra money to be able to put in the road. Now, as far as I know, and I've, I've asked, the road doesn't require any setbacks. The road can be the road on your property. It can be right up against the property line. So that's why the road is cut where it is, because it has to go down into the back to get to the garage. So, again, I would be, I'm going to landscape. I'm gonna put up some bushes. I'm gonna put up some lighting that will make it look nice going along the road down in the back. I've got fake wainscoting that goes around the border, around the bottom of the garage, to try to make it as attractive as possible. It's not a commercial garage. I own antique vehicles. And I'm laughing because I, I'm lucky enough to own a camp on a lake up north. I spend most of my summer at the camp. I'm also lucky enough to own property in Florida, so I'm in Florida for three months in the winter time, hopefully when I retire. So the actual time that I'm gonna be spending there in the garage is not a lot. So it's not gonna be, you know, squealing tires and loud music. I'm too old for that. I don't, I just, that won't be happening. Sure, is there gonna be some pounding of metal at times, and am I gonna be welding metal at times? Sure, absolutely, there I am. But that's why the building is big enough to be enclosed, and the workshop will be enclosed. And I really don't feel as though it's gonna disrupt the neighborhood at all. It's gonna be pretty quiet. So I don't know if you have any more concerns, and I don't know if that helps at all, but that's the best I can tell you, is what my plans are. Yeah.
Can you just come here for a moment, give me an idea of where that pipe is?
Yep.
I put my copy of the...
It's roughly right there.
Are you proud of it?
It's roughly like right here. It came, it came down off the corner of the house.
Uh-huh.
Underground, right there.
Uh-huh.
And it comes out right here. And when he dug that road right through here, he uncovered it. So he came in, dug it out, and replaced it. So now the end of the pipe is sitting right off the side of that driveway. And I do, I do understand your concerns, but I'll go back to my... I do understand your concerns. However, when he dug that pipe up, he said that pipe was completely dry, like no water had ever been in it. So he goes, "It didn't look like it ever had water in it, but I replaced it just in case." So I'm assuming that no water comes out of that pipe, but I will still be willing to do whatever you want me to do to either hide it, bury it, whatever. I don't, it doesn't matter to me, because I truly believe that it doesn't, doesn't do anything. My basement is very dry. I don't know if yours is too, but my basement is very dry, and I don't think I have any water problems there, so I'd be happy to do that.
Sir, do you have any questions? All right, ahead.
My name is John McCarthy. My address is 580 North Broadway in Havre. I am one of the owners of 6 Gould Hill Road and 7 Gould Hill Road, which is basically the house at the top of the hill and the garage across the street. I did not know about this until this afternoon, when I picked my sister's mail up at the post office after bringing her to a doctor's appointment today. And so at that point, reading it, I actually went and knocked on his door to introduce myself and to find out exactly where it's going on. Unfortunately, he wasn't home, so I didn't really have a lot of this information till I've gotten here tonight. Having a conversation with him before the meeting started, he pretty much told me exactly what you've, what he's told you as far as the architecture, how the building is being built, that he was gonna put some decorative faux stone along the knee wall around the building, planters and things like that. I have to say that I drove in his driveway today, first time, really never paying attention. And the yard is meticulous, and it's well-maintained, very attractive, with retaining walls, gardens, flower beds, you name it. Wish my yard looked as good. And so after having a conversation with him, I think that the design of the building is gonna have, it's gonna be white and with the faux stone, and, and it sounds like he's gonna be putting up some screening on the property lines. I personally, and nor does my sister, have any objection to this. I don't live next door, so I can't speak to that. But I, I don't think it's going to be a detriment to the, to the neighborhood. I did drive up Highland Avenue, and there's a couple of old metal buildings down there that look just absolutely horrendous. And part of the reason is because they're in front of the, of the homes, or right at the street. The fact that he's gonna put it all the way to the back, and when the trees fill in at 108, I don't think you'll even see it from 108 very well either. But overall, I don't think it'll be a detriment. And I've, by the way, I am in commercial real estate, and I have been in the business for over 40 years. So I've seen some bad decisions when it came to real estate construction. So in my personal opinion, I don't see any detriment, and I think, I can't speak to a neighbor, but as far as we're concerned, we've been there 80 years, actually 80 years this month, since my parents bought it the month Roseville died. So that's all I have to say.
Any direct questions for the applicant while he's here?
Not that I didn't ask him before, which he then repeated it when he came up to the podium. So I think I'm satisfied.
Thank you.
And I, and I have a love of antique cars.
Jack, I would like to ask another question, if it's okay?
Yes.
Actually, I'm very impressed with your presentation and your concerns with your neighbors. Question I have for you is, the building seems excessively large, especially for residential one. It really does.
I don't disagree with that.
Right. So the thing is, is that you're asking us, you're saying you have approximately eight cars you wanna put in there. Really? So it's really like 100% over what we follow as a code?
I have six right now.
Yeah, but I understand that. That's fine. This isn't about how many you have, though. And this also doesn't, I'm gonna say that you're gonna be a great neighbor. That's my guess, right? You seem to be concerned with other people. I'm thinking you're gonna be a great neighbor. I don't doubt that for a second. Next year, you could sell it to somebody else. They may use that building for something else. Right? So my concern with you is this. You're saying approximately eight vehicles. I've been a builder for 50 years. That's gonna, that could easily house a lot more than eight vehicles.
There's no question about it, but...
Right?
Yes, there's no question about it. However, I am, I know this, you might laugh, but I am a man of meager means. I do not have a lot of money. I bought my first car that I still have when I was 27 years old. It was a 1966 Corvette. I paid $31,000 for that car. And I still own it. I have a 1964 Chevy Bel Air that I bought when I was 32 years old. I still have it. Those are my cars. I have a 2000 BMW M5 that I bought about seven years ago. And currently, right now, I'm in the process of building a 1959 Chevy pickup truck. That's what I have. That's what I do. I'm not a commercial guy. I don't collect cars. I'm not a multimillionaire. I'm not filling it up to the roof. Yes. Could there be more than eight cars in there? If I put in six or seven stacker lifts, sure, I could fit probably 15 cars in there if I wanted to. And if any of you were car people, you might understand what I'm saying, but every single person that I've talked to that's built a garage said, "Make sure you build it big enough, because it's never gonna be big enough." So when I decided to do this, I went as big as I felt I would absolutely need for the rest of my life. Not a young man. I'm 67 years old, and I just wanna live out the rest of my life in happiness. And this is gonna do it for me.
Good, fair enough. Thank you. Excuse me, one second. John, do you have any questions for the applicant? You all set?
One question.
Yes, sir.
I asked it last, last month. These cars are registered?
All of them are registered.
So you can leave them outside?
100%.
It's all legal. All his cars are legally left outside the building. He just wants to put them inside.
I don't have any objection with what he wants to do with this.
Right. I'm just saying, he can leave them outside and scatter them around the yard.
Oh, absolutely. I get that.
That's legal.
Yep.
Because you can only have one unregistered car.
Correct. Oh, yeah. I don't object to how many cars he has. I don't have any objection to that.
Right.
What I'm saying is, is what we're voting on here tonight isn't what he's gonna be doing, or what his intentions are. What we're voting on tonight is we're voting on an oversized building.
No, we're voting on four cars. More than four cars in a building.
Correct.
Nothing to do with the building.
No, it says "house" four cars.
Right.
Which means you wouldn't be able to house five cars in there. You can only house four in there, which means that's, it's, they don't give you square footage, obviously. So what do you figure is a good square footage for a vehicle?
For one vehicle?
For one vehicle.
Well, a 24 by 24 garage holds two.
Okay. So the national average right now, every, all the big builders are putting in 20 by 20 garages, which is a 10 by 20, a 10 by 20 for each car. You and I both know 10 is not enough. 12 by 20 is though. That's 240 square feet. And you're putting up a 2,400 square foot footprint, which means you got enough for 10 cars on the bottom, and then you could put in as many lifts and have 20 cars, if you wished to.
You're absolutely right.
Okay.
But I'm here to tell you, that's never gonna happen. I don't have the money.
It's not gonna happen for you.
No.
But we're not, this isn't about you.
I understand. Well, it, with all due respect, it is about me. This is my building. And yes, I understand your concerns. Your concern is, well, what happens when this guy either dies or sells? What's gonna happen down the road? I don't have any control over what happens down the road. You guys do.
We have control.
That's why you're asking the question. However, I need to go back to the fact that legally, I can build that garage. And there's nothing you can do about it. You can't tell me I can't, because I'm not asking for any dimensional relief. I'm not asking for any height relief. I'm not asking for any relief at all. So if I wanted to, I could have gone down and saw Sam, never mentioned the fact that I have more than four cars, and he would have handed me a permit to build that building. That's not me. I don't operate that way. Now, as far as what happens with that property when I either sell or die, I, I don't know, but, you know, I'm not here to be adversarial. I wanna get along with my neighbors. I wanna get along with you guys. I wanna get along with everybody. That's what I do. I try as hard as I can to get along with everybody that I have interactions with. So I understand your concerns. However, I don't think that that's a reasonable thing to, well, you can deny, absolutely. And if you want me to park my vehicles on the lawn and junk up the neighborhood for my neighbors, that's what I'll do. I'll just have four cars in the garage at any one time. I don't want to do that. I wanna be a good, respectful neighbor. But if it comes, push comes to shove, and you guys say, "No, I'm not giving you relief from that bylaw," I'm building the building anyway.
He should come to the table and be able to...
I'm trying to, but I just haven't been able. John, you...
John Silver. New Hampshire. I'd just like to remind the board of another garage that kinda set a precedent for something similar to here that we recently looked at. And by this item that's actually on the similar to here that we recently looked at, and by this item that's actually on the zoning bylaws that I think we all pretty much kind of agree is not what it should be, for lack of a better term. I think it's not on us to decide what's gonna happen in the future, it's on the building department to enforce the codes that are on the books, should the building be used for something that it's not approved to be used for. So I think in this case, just my opinion, that the relief is for an honest man trying to do the right thing and house cars. And that's what the board should be looking at. That's my opinion.
Are you gonna take your seat on, on the board?
Am I allowed to?
Yes, absolutely. You, you come in and...
And Rick is gonna stand. Rick goes back to be...
And Rick can still sit there, but he won't, he won't be voting anymore.
I'll even switch places with John.
To participate.
I want to give input. I'm asking to be recognized to give input to the board.
Okay. Recognize, he's back. John is back at the board as a voting member there. Okay. Is there any more questions? I'm sorry, go ahead.
I wanna remind the board that in your notice of decision, you can state how many vehicles can be parked in this building. I would suggest nine. Presently, the applicant has six. With stackers, he would be able to fit eight and one in the, and I'm using this term very loosely, service bay. That way, there could be no argument about whether or not the truck that he is building constitutes an additional vehicle, by putting, by allowing him to put, house nine vehicles. And it would be no different than, say, I was married and had two kids that still lived at home, and one of them had a motorcycle and a car. The motorcycle would have to sit outside, because motorcycles are considered the equivalent of cars when it comes to occupying space. So theoretically, if I had a lodge built, a lodge barn, horse barn, and I chose to instead use it as a garage, with the way of the economy and the way of the world today, you could have more than four cars to park in a garage. That is archaic language that's left over. Through research, I found out that it was original to the nineteen seventy-two, when I believe that the zoning ordinances were drawn up with the idea that nobody would have that many cars. It's becoming more common today with the fact that, you know, people, as they get older, has, have a tendency to keep things that they enjoy. That's my two cents worth.
Are there any more questions from the board? I'm sorry, yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Just to address this specific issue, we have a barn on our property, too. I can fit eight vehicles in there, no problem, and still have room for two or three horses. That's, that's the absolute truth. The old horse bins are still in there with the hay feeder and everything, and we can still probably fit in about eight cars to nine cars in our, in our, in our barn. And I think that when this building is built, depending on the type of garage door he puts on it, it could look as much as a, as a horse barn as any other type of barn. It's gonna have a gable roof, and I'm not sure that I'd ever wanna tell my neighbor that he can't put whatever he wants inside his building. So I'm not really a fan of limiting what he can do inside, and how are you gonna police that? I mean, I think, so if he buys twelve cars, he can only put eight inside, so he leaves the other four out in the yard, then both of us are gonna be able to see the cars sitting around the driveway. So I, I don't really think that's logical, and, and I don't see how you could ever enforce it. It's inside, behind, behind closed doors. And where all I can see is that building driving that, it'll look more like a horse barn. Maybe put a cooper on the top. So that's, that's all I have to say about that.
Thank you. Any more questions for the board before we close the public meeting? Yes, ma'am.
The forty by sixty, you said that's twenty-four hundred square feet? So that's pretty much the size of my house. So it's the size of a house, height-wise. How, how, how tall?
I believe it's twenty-two feet to the peak.
So what does that mean? I need like...
The walls are fourteen feet high, and then the roof does this, the peak of the roof will be twenty-two feet.
How tall is here? I need a visual.
You can go to thirty-six feet.
Yeah, this, how tall, this is probably, what, fifteen feet to the ceiling, from floor to ceiling?
Oh, no, more than that.
At least.
This is about seven and a half feet.
Yeah, so this is, this is, these walls would be higher than his proposed walls, the fourteen foot walls, interior. If that helps.
Two-story colonial, I don't know what you're living in, a two-story colonial would be about the same size, I would guess. It's gonna be pretty, the total height would be about the same. He decides fourteen foot walls, straight up.
Oh, and then...
And then the roof starts.
About sixteen foot walls, actually.
So he's like a basketball hoop in almost a half, if that helps. I don't know if you have kids.
I do, but, not basketball, but yeah, okay, thank you.
Any others, anything else from the board? At, I'm gonna close the public meeting at, what's that, seven forty? And we're gonna, we're gonna start our deliberation. Just wanna remind the board members that under deliberation, no question can be asked of the applicant or the public. No evidence may be accepted or reviewed, including the latest set of plans. Any clarifications or questions may be asked of the administrative assistant. Jim, do you wanna read his answers to the variances?
I will have to...
There you go.
Do you want me to read the applicant's answers?
Yeah, we'll read the, the, what it's talking about, and then the applicant's comments.
Okay. Item one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because I am exercising my right as a property owner to have the full use and enjoyment of the property. Home garages are very common, therefore it should not be contrary to the public interest. If the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because it is my desire to have more than four vehicles in the garage, but I plan to put some on car stackers, therefore, in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. Number three, granting the variance would do substantial justice, because it has been a desire of mine to have a large home garage to store...
Excuse me, Jim, why don't we vote on each one as you... Okay, let's vote on number one.
Okay.
We're gonna vote on each one right after he gets through reading and so forth. Jim, do you...
I'll, I'll reread.
Are we gonna talk about this?
Yeah, we can have a discussion.
Yeah, you know...
Do we need a discussion?
That's, that's what deliberative session is all about, right, yes.
So I understand.
Go right ahead. Any comments from the board members, anything you wanna talk about? Yeah.
Well, I think that the, the issue here is, is that the ordinance says you can't have more than four. The size of the building, where it is on the property, that's not the issue here.
Right.
Right? So it seems to me that his request is doubling what the ordinance says, and we cannot, as a board, change an ordinance, that's not our purview. So his request seems to be excessively in conflict with the ordinance, in my opinion.
Well, no, I mean, basically, the reason why we're here is not to rewrite the zoning ordinance, but in order to give relief in special circumstances where the ordinance, where it causes either problems, hardship, or is inconsistent with the ordinance. But I mean, i- i- if you just have to say, well, that's what the ordinance says, and that's what you gotta do, then you would need us. We're, we're basically here to, to provide relief when, when it's appropriate.
Right. And it's just, in my opinion, the amount that he wants to go over the ordinance is the, is the thing I think is excessive.
I think a factor to kinda piggyback on that is, I personally don't understand the ordinance.
Yeah, but that's not, that, that's not our job.
I, I understand that, but I, I understand that, but I think it would be helpful to understand why that's an ordinance. For what reason is that the ordinance? And is it, is it to mitigate backyard mechanics? Is it to mitigate, you know, what, why did that become an ordinance? Because I think in understanding that, helps us to better rationalize what we're doing here.
It, it may not be a particularly good tool, but I, I believe that it is to maintain the character of the neighborhood. It, it, and whether or not that was the right way to go about it is a, a separate issue. But that, that is the, the public interest that I see in this.
And that's kinda where I'm going with this, is like, because your interpretation and my interpretation for why it's an ordinance are actually two different things. And that right there is like, okay, well, what am I, why am I granting this, and what is the, you know, what was the basis of having this and granting it, you know, what am I, what am I potentially undoing, right? Because to me, the whole ordinance seems silly. And the only thing that wrap, I can wrap my head around is, like I said, backyard mechanics or something like that.
The ordinance should say no more than four unregistered vehicles in a garage.
Disagree with you.
That way, you don't have a bunch of parts and everything for a fire hazard.
Yeah, I don't disagree.
No, it shouldn't be registered vehicles.
Well, am I wrong in assuming that? I read that as saying, basically, if you figure two hundred and forty square feet per vehicle, and the square footage that the vehicle, in other words, if it's all on one floor, for example, right, you multiply four times two forty, and that'll give you the size of the building, it's maximized, and you can put in, otherwise, if you can go to five, six, seven, eight, now all of a sudden, you're gonna have much larger...
If you've ever worked on an old car, you want a half the size of this room to be able to put parts and keep everything. You need, those figures aren't gonna work for when you're storing cars like that. You want a big area. Am I correct?
You can't ask him that. You can't, you can't respond.
All I mean is, when you're reading the ordinance, I'm saying, I'm saying it has more to do with square footage.
We're not looking at that. We're looking at vehicles.
We're looking at the number of vehicles.
It's not the square footage that we're looking at.
So in other words, we would allow somebody to put a hundred and twenty-one million?
Yeah. If the town allows it, yes.
Basically, up until the last election a month ago.
Right.
There was a limit of twelve hundred square feet.
Twelve hundred square feet.
The, on, on the warrant, there was a, to change the, the zoning ordinance to remove that restriction. So now there is no restriction...
You're talking square footage?
Square footage.
Or the fact that they have to be completed?
No, they were, it, it was, they would, they would, they would've needed to come here to, to have a square footage more than twelve hundred.
To put this building here...
They would've had to come here for that squi, for forty by sixty building. Now, he doesn't have to.
Right. So, like I said, all it is is the number of vehicles, building for the number of vehicles.
It's all we're looking at.
So, and I, and I think with, as far as like the mechanic, commercial mechanic work, I mean, that's on the building inspector to enforce, that's on, you know, if he sells it and somebody wants to do, run a garage out of there, they're gonna have to come through planning to get a home-based business and all that.
Right. Through the planning board.
So I mean, that's, that's not us, it's just a matter of relief from this ordinance, and that's it.
So is anybody in the board, if anybody in the board here have any thoughts on the first item? It's a lovely building he's put up, right? Once that building is up, I personally don't care how many people vote, I really don't. If he's, if he's willing to put up all of it and not have it scattered up, that doesn't matter. My issue is basically is that I just don't, I, I don't quite understand why it is we're not having a square footage maximum on this.
Nobody said anything at the voting day, and they voted for it. Why'd the town vote for it?
So if Mr. Schell, if he had shown up this week, he wouldn't even have to be here.
No, because, because it's still, the, the four cars is, is still in the, in the ordinance. The square footage, the square footage is no longer...
The only issue is the story you were...
Is building application.
We don't enforce anything.
That triggered this.
Nobody does in town.
Well, that's not our, again, not on our purview. Right. So that's my...
Do we continue?
Yep.
Read, just read number one, and we'll, and get a vote, Jim.
Criteria number one, granting the variance would not be contrary to the public interest, because I'm exercising my rights as the property owner to have a, have the full use and enjoyment of my property. Home garages are very common, therefore it should not be contrary to the public interest. Ms. Reardon, do you agree?
No.
Mr. Gibbs?
Agree.
Mr. Hamel?
No. The, the public interest and the spirit of the ordinance include that the character of the neighborhood in a forty by sixty building is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Okay. Did you write that on your sheet?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Solva?
Actually, I typed it, I typed it up on a separate piece of paper.
That's good, close enough. Ms. Solva?
I agree, I think it will add to the character of the neighborhood based on the design and architecture of the building.
Thank you. Mr. Kozak?
Yeah, I vote yes. I don't believe the request violates the basic objections of the zoning ordinance.
So you have three votes to two in favor, therefore the criteria has been met. Criteria two, if the variance were granted, the spirit of the ordinance would be observed, because it is my desire to have more than four vehicles in my garage, but I plan to put some on car stackers, therefore in keeping with the spirit of the ordinance. Ms. Reardon?
No. The, the first and second criteria are still closely tied together, but it's still outside, in my opinion, the spirit of the ordinance.
Write on your sheet.
I almost wrote that down.
Mr. Gibbs?
I agree.
Mr. Hamel?
No, because same reasons I gave for criteria one.
Mr. Sylvia?
I agree.
Mr. Kozak?
I agree.
Mr. Chair, on a vote of four to one in favor, the criteria has been met.
It's three, it's three to two.
To two.
Excuse me?
It's three to two.
Same vote as last time, Jim.
John? Yeah, three, it was three.
Okay, Mr. Hamel, you voted no. Okay. Criteria three. The granting of the variance would do substantial justice, because it has been a desire of mine to have a large home garage to store and work on my vehicles. By granting this variance, you will be allowing me to fulfill that desire. Ms. Reardon?
I, I'm gonna say yes to this, I don't think it's necessarily tied so tightly to the first two criteria, the...
So that's a yes?
The gain that he'll have is, does not over, overweight the public interest in my mind. So yes, I'd say yes.
Okay. Mr. Gibbs?
I think I agree, but granting the variance would do substantial justice?
Yes.
I don't understand what it's... I don't have a problem with it. Does that agree on it?
Yes.
Okay, I agree.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
I agree, will do substantial justice.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes, I don't believe there's any harm or impact to the area.
Mr. Chairman, the vote was unanimous on that and the criteria has been met. Criteria number four. If the variance were granted, the values of the surrounding properties would not be diminished because this is a very attractive building. It will have the same color as the house as well as decorative wainscoting around the base of the building. It is also as far to the back of the property as possible. Ms. Reardon, do you agree?
Yes.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes, I agree.
Mr. Hamel?
Yes, because there's been no real evidence about anything about affecting value, so it's a yes.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes, I don't believe the properties would diminish value.
Mr. Chair, that criteria has been met by unanimous vote. Unnecessary hardship. Owing to special conditions of the property that distinguish it from other properties in the area, denial of the variance would result in unnecessary hardship because item number one, no fair and substantial relationship exists between the general public purpose of the ordinance provision and the specific application of that provision to the property because it is my intent to stack the vehicles inside the garage, so no one should be able to tell that there are more than four vehicles inside. Ms. Reardon, do you agree?
No, I don't agree. The applicant himself said that there are no special conditions on this property as compared to other properties in the area. And so if there's no special conditions, that would cause a hardship.
Mr. Gibbs?
I agree.
Mr. Hamel?
No, for the same reasons that Ms. Reardon said.
Mr. Sylvia?
I do believe that this would, not granting this variance would cause hardship. I mean, these cars are not inexpensive and to leave them out in the yard would essentially null and void prior criteria and diminish the value of them. So for that, I agree. I'll email it to you.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes, I believe the applicant's use of the property is a reasonable one.
Mr. Chair, a vote of three to two, the vote was in favor. And the criteria one has been met. Criteria two is the purpose is a reasonable one. Ms. Reardon?
Well, I think in light that I don't think it's, there's a special condition, I don't think I can say it's a reasonable use.
They're separate.
No, but the
Combined, I thought.
Owing to special conditions applies to the entire section.
Okay.
So that
No.
If there's no special condition, then...
Yeah, it's my understanding that the A under number five has two parts to it.
Right.
So there's no special, he stated there's no special condition, so there is no special condition to the second part of.
Okay.
So there's...
By the way, the applicant's response is, this is simply a home garage owning and working on classic cars is a passion of mine. So Ms. Reardon, that's a no?
That's a no.
Mr. Gibbs?
Yes.
Mr. Hamel?
No.
Mr. Sylvia?
Yes.
Mr. Kozak?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, on a vote of three to two, the criteria has been met. Subsection B. Explain how if the criteria in subsection A are not established, an unnecessary hardship... I seem to be missing page two. Explain how if the criteria, well, the criteria were met in subsection A, therefore you don't have to actually do subsection B.
Right. I agree.
So therefore, Mr. Chair, the criteria have been met.
It's been approved, sir.
No, it hasn't been approved.
No.
We need a vote to move it forward.
Yep, sorry Roger, getting ahead of myself, reading my own notes.
So there would need to be a motion to grant the requested relief from section 14, 3A of zoning to allow more than four cars in a garage.
A motion.
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Second.
Mr. Gibbs.
Any further comments on the motion? Ms. Reardon?
In my opinion, unfortunately, there's an ordinance that says he can't have more than four. But we can't change that.
You can't change that, but you can give relief to that.
Give relief, but there are no special conditions of this property different than any other property in the area, or in town probably. Okay, so just want to point out that this would set a precedent.
We've already done that.
No, we haven't.
No, we haven't.
We have not.
There were special conditions to the property the last time we did it.
I know, but the statutes actually say that the an opinion of the ZBA is only for a particular piece of property and does not set precedent by statute.
Right.
It does set a precedent in that there will be other people that will ask for the same thing, in my opinion, and so approving this, I mean, I have nothing against him having his cars, but it is what it is. And I think it could lead to other applications down the road that we would be hard pressed to have a different outcome to. So in essence, we would be changing the ordinance.
I just don't see how it's different than the garage addition that we approved. And in my opinion, that was the precedent that was set. We had a two-car garage with stackers, which held four cars. And we approved an addition for another bay to hold an additional two garages, two cars.
No, and the cars were, if this was the garage.
Six cars.
If this was the garage.
On that plan.
The lift was over here and there was a car on top. There was no car underneath it, if I recall right. So what he wanted to do is put another one there so that he could put one more car and have the other car on top.
That garage, that still, that garage still had the ability to house six cars.
But it didn't.
Not when we were there.
But it didn't, so that's, that's a different situation than this one.
I don't agree with that.
Okay.
Because the ordinance says no more than four cars. And that building, that building that we looked at can house six cars.
Right, and you didn't see, you don't see the difference of the nature of that property, and I do.
Agreed, yeah, no, and I'm just saying, yeah, I just, I think in this particular, I think if the, I think the difference between the two is simply that he wasn't coming for a variance on the four cars.
Hmm, I don't agree with that. That's why there's five of us.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
And a second.
A second.
Take the vote, Jim.
Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs?
Aye.
Mr. Hamel?
No.
Ms. Reardon?
No.
And Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
By a vote of three to two, the relief has been granted.
You have 30 days. If someone could put a request for rehearing or denied. Good luck.
Thank you. I just wanted to tell you I appreciate all the work that you've got to do, but I've never been more disappointed in you guys.
Thank you.
It's silly. You know, I just want to be honest and fair with everybody. I've been told by several people that live here, you should just step in on some of the work. And that's sad, that's not what I have to tell anyone.
Thank you.
I really appreciate you guys and yeah, I appreciate what you did. I have 15 years, I've been a chair of the patients these years, 15 years, so I sat on that solid table for many, many years. And I kind of appreciate everything that you guys do. I will be functioning as soon as I can. And I'm not going to let you leave the car. There's nothing to be car closed, there's nothing to be swinging tires, it's not going to be any of that stuff. I just love my little cars. Thank you.
Thank you. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from February?
Yes. Make a motion to accept the meetings of the March, the minutes of the March 5th meeting as presented.
Second.
Mr. Chairman? Should there have been, just a question. In the minutes, should there, was there a motion to move this to public hearing?
There doesn't have to be.
We didn't have to be, okay. Because I had here that we, the only thing I wrote in my notes was move to public hearing and I didn't know if there was a motion for that, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Sylvia?
Approve of the minutes.
Aye.
Ms. Reardon?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
Mr. Kozak?
Aye.
That's unanimous. There is no escrow manifest.
Okay, there's, don't everybody rush out now. What I'm giving you in this, this top page is what I forgot about my
There was a vote. I didn't even know there was a vote.
I had a meeting with the selectman last week.
100 miles an hour since the whole of March. And I leave a vacation at 4:00 AM. I'm like half-packed.
I had a meeting last week, it was a board meeting. And these are the things they discussed. As you can see, the changes that are written there and so forth. If you could turn it to the second page. When I talked to Mr. Mashad, and if you take a look at our number one, I really don't understand this, how this is gonna happen. Let me read it and try to interpret for you what I did on number. I rewrote it and said, "When dealing with applicants, review the type of variance", this is given it to Jim, "and what ought to", "give it to their contractors" is what he's really saying. And so I wrote down, this is what I wrote. "When dealing with applicants, review the type of the variance and what they need to get info of the ZBA. Any other questions, tell them to talk to their contractor. End it quickly, tell where to look it up." What do you think? I have to turn this over to the selectman eventually, but that's how I interpreted it. They were very, they were very tight on spend a minimum amount of time with an applicant.
Well, if that was the case, we shouldn't have been talking about the size of the building. That had nothing to do with tonight.
This is, this is when an applicant goes to see Jim.
Okay.
Okay? This is, that one there.
It's still got to do with the minutes.
No.
No.
No, this is, this is Jim's work instructions.
Okay, okay, yep.
I'm not sure how it's gonna work when, not everybody has a contractor, but that's...
And by state law, we need to be helpful.
Really?
Yes, yes.
We have an obligation to be helpful.
We don't have to fill out the form for them, but we need to be helpful.
On the agenda?
I mean?
Can we just get this on the agenda for the selectmen? Because I have some, I have some questions that I would love to bring up in public.
Well, what I'm trying to do is that Bob told me as soon as you discuss it with, and your board members approve it, type out and give it to them, drop a couple of options off. That's what I'm trying to do tonight. You know, if you'd rather have it, go on to discuss it. But I look at that number one, that when an applicant comes in, you know, I look at it this way. Most people in this time, they're looking for a variance for a shed or whatever. Have no idea, they've never been to, they look for any kind of a variance. They need all the help they can. But I agree with Roger. So there's a lot of states help the applicant as much as possible.
A lot as much as possible, but they'd be reasonably accommodative to the applicant.
Well, that was number one. I appreciate some comments. And now here's the mylas. There's two options. Everybody knows what the applicant, that's the plans and so forth. The applicant could go and have it registered or he can mail them. No more dropping them off.
That's fine.
What does that mean? Where right now they come to the office and drop off the mylas to you? Is that?
And they have to be registered.
Normally plans are dropped off here. They get signed and I take them to the registry for recording.
Oh, the registry of deeds and, oh, okay.
Yeah.
And so what you're saying is now the applicant will have to do that?
Yes, the applicant, and the thing is that as I remember it, Jim, you said a couple of times, a lot of times they're in a rush to get that because they can't do anything unless it's registered, correct? Can you explain that to me?
Wait, I have a different question before you go there. When you go to the registry and give them the mylas, what kind of a receipt do you get?
I get a monetary receipt stating what
Does it say what?
Was recorded as.
It says what?
Excuse me?
What, what does the receipt say?
The receipt says what the plan was recorded by page and book number.
Does it have a description of the plan?
No.
So
They could bring one and get the slip and bring it back and it wouldn't be the correct one.
Exactly, this is what I'm getting at. The reason why
They're creating more of a problem.
The reason why we, the town needs to get the plan registered is because that's the only way they know what plan was registered. And that is the only protection we really have.
Right, right.
So I mean
It'll be real easy to bring one set of plans, get it registered, give him the paperwork saying he did it, but it's not gonna be the right plan. It's gonna be what the homeowner wants for a plan.
That's where the alternative is, is that I would, they would drop off the mylas with me, I would have them signed. I would mail them to the registry to be recorded. If there's anything that prevents those plans from being recorded, then the applicant would have to go to the registry. then the applicant would have to go to the registry, pick them up, take them back to their engineer, get them corrected, and bring corrected milars.
To you.
To me, to mail. I'm fine with him mailing it and not carving it.
What?
And I mean, I think if they need to carry, I think if their, if their qualm is Jim driving to the registry to register it, and they want to do away with that, then I think our only option would be for Jim to physically mail it. And then we could get in a situation like that. And at that point, if the applicant wants to be like, well, what the F, I know I gotta wait for it to be registered, at that point, we say, we'll take it up with the selectmen because they won't allow us to help you anymore than this. I mean.
I think we're going to need.
You know what I mean?
Inconvenient. I mean, we've run into situations where basically by the time that the milars get signed, they are that, the machinery is at the property line, ready to go to work. And delaying it, going back and forth in the mail is going to be horribly inconvenient on the applicants.
I think we should put that we can absolutely just deal with just mailing it. We can't let the applicant do it. But I think we should lay out the ramifications if they insist that we do it that way. And let the selectman make the decision and hang himself. I mean, I don't know what to tell you. Because I'm, I don't know about you, Jack, but I'm sick of this fight. So at this point, it's like, you want to cut your nose off to spite your face? Here's I told you so, here's our recommendations and we told you so, and.
It just costs the homeowner more money.
Right.
That's all it is.
And it's going to cost them an election next time when they find out that the selectmen forced them to do it. I mean, I don't know what to tell them.
Well, yeah, both, but yeah.
And I understand that the, if the contract can't get started, the building until it's registered at the deeds, correct?
He can't get a building permit, so it slows everything down. And now you're going back to the bank because some of the bank notes are only last for so long. They have to get started. They can't do that. They lose their bank loans.
And it's all going back to the selectmen. They gotta walk the, see the progress every month. Ms. White would like to make a comment.
Mr. Chair, I, um, I, I think that we should be taking care of bringing milars and, and whatever to the, anything that needs to be certified, bring it to the registry. But I'm not sure whether the zoning board still has any petty cash, or if the selectmen has taken that away. Which means he couldn't do that then.
What were your last comments?
Ms. White, can you speak up a little? Has the selectmen taken the petty cash away so that you are able to? Register? Actually, yes, I no, I no longer have petty cash. I cannot go.
Right. They took the select, they took the petty cash away.
This needs to be on the selectmen's agenda, and it needs to be addressed and put to bed at the next meeting. It's that simple. This is, this is not something that can, we can do and go back and forth. Because this back and forth between these boards and Jim and selectmen can end and be put to bed because it's creating havoc. Pardon my French.
Why can't the selectmen's secretary do this? Let them do it. They want to do it, let, let their secretary do it.
The selectmen's meeting from last night. And the selectmen voted for Joe Iadello to be the liaison to the ZBA. I don't know what he's supposed to do, being the liaison to the ZBA. Joe.
He's one of the selectmen.
Whose real name is Anthony. Whose real name is Anthony.
If they got voted as liaison, why aren't they sitting in this meeting?
There was no way.
Look, they can see Jack on Tuesdays, Thursdays, Saturdays, Sundays.
What'd you say?
Can't sit at the table. Because there's no statutory.
Right, he's got to remember.
Yeah.
We've got plenty of chairs.
As much as I, I think we could discuss this all night, but I got a flight at 4:00 AM. Simply, this is, this is a, if the selectmen want a resolution to this, this needs to be an agenda item and be discussed and agreed upon.
We should talk about this at the next meeting. Give us a month to think about it.
Let me look at and make comments, and I'm going to tell Bob that there was, it's just, just let's go through the rest and guess what the heck of it, okay? Mailing for abuddies notices. 10 or under, Jim will do the mailing.
Using the mailing machine. Can you do certified mail on the mailing machines?
Yes.
And what, then you wouldn't, the mailman come here to pick stuff up?
The post office has told me, because I've done one already, I have to hand them over the counter for them to be date stamped. Because that is, that is.
With the certified.
Proof that they were mailed on a specific, by a specific date.
So, but anyway, then over, over 10 abuddies, the applicant does the mailing. Get some abuddies list.
Then how do we get proof that the abuddies got their mails?
They get it from the town hall.
Get what from the town hall?
None of the applicant is doing it, he'll be getting it.
I have no idea.
But that, that again, how do we know that the abuddies were notified?
100%. Exactly what I was saying, Roger. I agree with you 100%. Right there with the milars and everything.
Selectmen's liaison is getting paid and he's not sitting at these meetings. He's getting paid to do this. He should be here.
Okay, just found out. Well, that, that one there's on the abuddies. And Jim says that he thinks that, that he's the town hall. I'm not so sure of that. Again, I'm trying to write mid-questions down. I was in there for an hour and a half, but woo, woo, I got some, you know, whatever. But anyway, and then keep the minutes to a minimum.
Well, we all know what we have to do for the minutes, so, for them to be recorded, so kick rocks, I don't know what to tell you.
I, I mean, in terms of keeping them to the, like, the minutes for the last meeting were, you know, appropriately very short. But especially public hearings and deliberations, we need detailed minutes. I still remember the, the last time that the planning board, was it, no, it was us, went, went to court. Right, and we had a, the, the minutes were so bad that we had to pay someone to, a stenographer to, what do you call that? Make a, make a transcript of the meeting to present to the court. That cost really big bucks. I mean, you know, it's, it's.
We know what, you know, we know what we have to do for that one and, like, that's simply our response. Like, hey, have you guys gone to these seminars where they tell us exactly how we gotta keep our minutes? No? Great, well, we're doing it the way that we're supposed to be doing it. We can't do it any less. Simple as that.
So basically, the ones that we're doing for the public hearings, which is very detailed because they have to be, that is the minimum that we can do.
Right.
And the other ones, like Roger said, you know, we had a discussion about, about Jim's, Jim's job tasks, and maybe that's all what the minutes say. But, and that's fine, but.
So number four, keep minutes to a minimum. Check. Doing it.
Sometimes, sometimes it's, it's one page on two sides, and sometimes it's 20 pages.
Looking for some direction for the board members. I don't want to give this to the selectmen this week, that's for damn sure. Can everybody make some comments, especially the critical ones, like number one?
Next month.
Two and three, and we can discuss it next month? Yeah. And the other, the other two there are like.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, Ms. White.
Yes, go, go ahead, Ms. White.
I, I, I personally would say that to tell the selectmen that the board, the zoning board needs another meeting to go over everything they ask for because there's lots of discussion about everything that they're asking, and it's not, it's not right for them to ask to get your decision right now after another meeting.
Agreed.
I think the board needs, I think the board needs to look at what they've asked to do, think about it, and that the next meeting, and it even could be an agenda item after the next, whatever your next meeting is, if you're going to have one in two weeks, then, and then you can hash out everything because then you can answer all of their questions at the same time.
I 100% agree with Ms. White, and to double down on that and to give them a taste of their own medicine, we can let the selectmen know if they need an answer sooner than that. We can hold a meeting because we do have a second meeting in the month scheduled for March, and if they'd like, or for April. And if they'd like us to use that meeting to discuss this, to get them an answer quickly, we will certainly accommodate that. I bet you they'd love that.
If they did, it'd be okay for that second meeting.
Is it really?
If it's needed, yeah. And that's what I told them, that's what Jim told me.
We have to do that in certain circumstances by law, by RSA. So I think what we need to do is see, there's several things here that we've said. The RSA is governing. I think we need to get them, get those numbers and put it in front of their eyeballs for them to read.
Well, I did that with about the minutes, because I get a copy from, didn't I give you that last month?
Yeah.
Yeah, and they didn't even want to read it, the minutes.
Oh, no. Well, then I would, I would see if I can read it to them.
Do you have one more request too?
Ms. White, was that a motion?
Could you, could you prove, could you provide that list to Jim so he could get me one of those lists, those questions, so I can answer on that too, please?
Can you get one of these to Ms. White? Yeah, thank you.
And I'd like to see them. Motion to put this on the agenda for the next meeting?
And what should I say to the selectmen? The board has a serious issues with a couple of these, and we're going to.
Say, I brought this to the board. Unfortunately, we didn't have time to prepare. We're used to having 30 days to prepare. So we passed it out. We're going to review it, meet on it, and we'll be able to give you an answer at the next meeting, which is.
Month from now.
Yeah, May. And May is a good enough, we can hold our second meeting if you would like us to, and it's a part of discussion.
Liaison here, so we can talk to him.
Agreed.
He can bring the information.
And he can take the minutes for Jim that day. Sorry, I'm spicy, I'm spicy tonight. I got all fired up with the superintendent at the school board, so.
Your back is an orphan if he says he's, he's in.
No, Mr. Russell is not a voting member at the moment. Therefore, somebody.
I don't.
Okay. And is that going to be the May meeting or the?
I think that's it right now, it's a May meeting, unless the selectmen instruct us otherwise.
We meet sooner.
Yeah, I was, I was speaking to Bob tomorrow.
Jim, you don't have this. This piece of paper, he doesn't have that.
No, I'm taking the one that you've got in front of you.
Exists electronically?
No, I typed it.
You typed it, I'm going to type it back.
Okay. Mr. Sylvia?
Aye.
Ms. Riden?
Aye.
Mr. Gibbs? Mr. Hamel?
Aye.
And Mr. Kozak? Thank you. That's unanimous.
No, I was going to say, could you email me an electronic copy of this? Yes.
Give me your email address.
Rogerhamel@yahoo.com. If you know how to spell my name, at that yahoo.com.
Kozak, do you want to close the meeting?
Yeah. Yahoo.com. At yahoo. Y-A-H-O-O.
Y-A-H-O-O.
Dot com.
Just for you, Roger, I'll make an exception.
So with you, I, I, I can make red comments on it.
As you can see, they have no idea what goes on at the ZBA.
See, I do not accept that observation.
You should have been at the meeting.
One of them has been going to planning board meetings for four years. One of them was a member of the ZBA for, I don't know how long, a bunch of years. So they, they, they have to know what's going on.
Mike tried to interject a couple of things.
Is the meeting over?
I mean?
Is the meeting over?
Oh, yeah, we're in the meeting, yes.
No, well, so did we?
Announce the adjournment.
And now the light should go out.
Good morning, everybody, thank you.